All right, Dr. Aguilor, do you have any opening comments?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Members of the Board, during the weekend of February 17 through the 19th, the Ove Como High School seniors, Talen Ratliff and Ashlyn Jones, traveled to the Harvard University Speech and Debate Tournament in Cambridge, Massachusetts. This tournament is the largest tournament in the country. There were over 400 schools in attendance. Both students represented Como High School and Lafayette Parish very well. Talen made it to octo finals in the event of Program Oral Interpretation, which is the top 48. Talen also advanced to the first final round of Dramatic Interpretation. This event started with over 260 students from across the country. Talen placed third overall. Congratulations to Talen Ratliff and her sponsors on a job well done. On February 20th, Vermillionville Education Coordinator Melanie Harrington, ULL Associate Professor Tony Dasbit, and LPSS Gear Up Coordinator Kim Prajion hosted a collaborative event for 80 middle school students from Acadian, Karen Crowe, Judis, Lafayette, Paulborough, and Scott focused on Cajun and Creole culture and writing. The students were instructed by 17 English education majors from ULL and were selected for their schools' writing clubs. Many thanks to ULL, Vermillionville, and Gear Up for sponsoring this event. The students' work will be showcased at their schools in the very near future. On February 22nd, Vermillionville hosted a Music in Our Community event that featured Zodico musician Wayne Singleton and students from Myrtle Place, J. Wallace James, LJ Alamon, David Thibodeau, STEM, Lafayette, and Acadiana High Schools. French language was immersed in the event whenever possible. The performance was recorded for rebroadcast on KNHS 93.1, the radio station based at Northside High School's Broadcast Academy. Many thanks to all the partners who contributed to this event. Artworks, Local Learning, the National Network for Folk Arts and Education Center for Louisiana Studies, KRVS Public Media, AOC Community Media, Acadian Center for the Arts, Vermillionville, and the LPSS Schools of Choice and Music Programs. It was a wonderful endeavor to have the community and school system working so closely together to enrich the students' lives. The Indy Lecture Series hosted their event this past Monday, and the luncheon was well attended by business and community leaders and educators from ULL, SLCC, and LPSS. I want to thank everyone who was involved for hosting a successful event and for allowing me to publicly get the message out about the great things we are doing for the students in our community. Last night, a parent meeting was held at Charles Burke Elementary School for student applicants in the Dual Language Immersion Program in Spanish. Parents attended to learn more about this pre-K and kindergarten program for students who are zoned for Burke. Classes will consist of approximately 10 English-speaking and 10 Spanish-speaking students, and together, they will all learn the Spanish and English languages. This is the first dual-language immersion program in the state of Louisiana and is already drawing interest and support from the State Department of Education. Members of the Board and LPSS leaders will be conducting forums for our stakeholders and the public about the sales tax proposal. These forums will be for information-only purposes and will detail the need and the cause and the purpose of this half-cent sales tax to go before the voters on April 29. In the next two weeks, you can join us at the following locations at 6:00 PM. March 9th at either Scott Middle School or the Robidoux Center. On March 10th, at the Lafayette Public Library downtown. March 14th at Woodvale Elementary School. Or March 14th at the Youngsville City Council Meeting at 6:30 PM. At the Board Meeting on March 15th, I will announce additional locations for our forums at that time. Thank you.
All right, 2.1 Personnel Changes.
Madam President, the personnel changes for February and March are posted. Next week, we'll have some administrative introductions.
All right. I'm now moving on to the consent agenda. I'm going to read the items. My fellow Board members will indicate which ones they want to pull. 3.1 Academics: Approval for Early Obligation and Release of Funds for Textbooks and Consumables. 3.2 Administration Attendance Zone Modifications. I'll pull that one. 3.3 ESL Student Assignment. 3.4 Instructional Programs During Summer 2017. 3.5 Child Nutrition Resolution 03171904 for National School Breakfast Week and National Nutrition Month. 3.6 Child Nutrition Services Staffing at Southside High School for the 17-18 school year. All right, now, I'd like to ask my Board if there are no objections. I'd like to group items 3.7 through 3.20 together. They all involve bids at Southside High School. No objection?
Please pull those.
Okay. I'm going to pull them in Globbo. They're all approval of bids for various furniture and items for Southside High School. 3.21 Approval of Sealed Quotes for Westside Elementary School Lead Paint Abatement. 3.22 Approval of Sealed Quotes for Westside Elementary School Lead Paint Abatement Air Monitoring. 3.23 Approval to Issue a Request for Qualifications for Architectural Services to Develop Wing Addition Construction Standards.
Please pull that.
3.24 Approval of Bids for Westside Elementary School Renovations. 3.25 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. 3.26 Clarification of Language of Cooperative Endeavor Agreement on Naming of Marshall FBO Elementary School. 3.27 Request for Budget Revision and Self-Funded Construction Fund for Alice Boucher Elementary Parent Drop-Off Driveway Project Engineering Fees. 3.28 Listing of Bids Approved to Be Advertised by Superintendent. 3.29 Summary of Grant Funding and Activity, February 2017. 3.30 Budget to Actual Reports, February 2017. 3.31 Approval of Minutes. 3.32 Approved Bid Award Track Sender Bid 48-17. All right, if everything has been pulled, I entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that we approve all action items with the exception of those pulled.
Second. Okay, second by Ms. Morrison. All right, any questions or comments from the public? From members of the Board? All right, then, Madam Secretary, when you're ready, we'll call for the vote. All right, the first item that was pulled was 3.2.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve the zone modifications to the 2017-2018 rezoning plan, including changes that involve 5th grade student attended zones at JW Falk, SJ Montgomery, Woodvale Elementary, and middle school attended zones affecting Acadian, Broussard, and LJ Alamon.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion by Mr. Kanesic, second by Mr. Lachey-Lee. Do we have any comments from members of the public? All right, Mr. Hefner, if you wouldn't mind just giving a quick rundown on what the changes are, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the Board, Superintendent and staff, we recently met, or I recently met, with staff and the consultant with the transportation software as they were working on their bus routes and school assignments. And originally, we had planned on trying to make all of our elementary schools pre-K to 5, middle 6 to 8, 9 to 12, or high school. Because of some limitations on your current facilities, we had to back off of that a little bit. So some of our elementaries are pre-K 4, some of our middles are 5 to 8. What this is going to do is eliminate some potential issues, particularly with 5th graders. The first one is going to be a change where we already have Evangeline students that are on the east side of the parish, bounded roughly by Turlings, Brookbridge Highway, Lake Martin Road, and the parish line. Those kids are already going to Evangeline pre-K 4. If we don't make a change on the middle school side, then for one year, those 5th graders will go to Paulborough Middle. And so, they're going to get in, end up separated. We're going to have to send a bus in there to pick up these kids and bring them out. If we go ahead and modify the zone here and make this part of Alamon, I mean, Acadian Middle Zone, then that same bus will continue to pick up pre-K to 5. They'll drop off pre-K 4 to Evangeline, hop over to Acadian, and drop off the 5th grader. So it'll make it a lot cleaner, plus, those kids all stay together until they hit middle school and then into high school. So that was change number one. Change number two is an alignment of the Plantation-Broussard Middle Zone to eliminate an issue there. If we didn't do that, we would have kids going to Plantation for a little bit, and then they'd jump over to Broussard. So we eliminated that. The third one is tweaking the plan a little bit with regards to Woodvale. Woodvale goes pre-K 4 right now, and that would strand some of these 5th graders. They would end up having to make a jump for one year and then jump it over to the middle school. So what we're trying to do is go ahead and make a modification on that, and then just north of that area, which is just east of the railroad tracks, is where Montgomery comes across. So it affects that as well. So, just to summarize it, if we're going to move the modification for Acadian to come in where Evangeline currently is on the east side of the parish, we're looking at 11 5th graders that are affected. We'll also be moving 11 6th, 7th graders, and 12 8th graders for a total of 40 students. Paulborough would have a reduction of 11 6th graders, 6th, 7th graders, and 12 8th graders. For the Alamon change, that's going to be a total of 21 students. So there are going to be 7 5th graders, 4 6th graders, 3 7th graders, and 7 8th graders. And then for Falk and Montgomery, and the Woodvale change, we're looking at a total for the Woodvale to Falk, you're looking at 26 5th graders, and Falk to Montgomery is 9. So it's not a lot of students in the whole context of things, but I think these will make things go a lot smoother for families as well as for our transportation.
All right, any questions from the Board? Mr. Hidalgo.
Mr. Hefner, obviously, the rezoning, one of the major purposes was to alleviate some of the overcrowding in the overcrowded schools. Looking at Ernest Galette, the projected numbers are not very far off from the existing numbers. I mean, that's, you know, again, the zone line went all the way almost up to Penn Hook.
Yep.
It just doesn't make any sense. People could see the rooftop at Plantation Elementary. Can you help me understand that?
Well, if you remember, we looked at trying to make some adjustments there, but it would tend to either throw Galette over or throw Plantation over, particularly since you have one or more apartment complexes up in that general area. One of the things we had looked at was the 5th graders going ahead and leaving Galette and going to Broussard Middle. But really, the overall plan is for the Board to get its facility set up so you can do a pre-K 5 in the proper elementary grade span, 6 through 8, middle school, and 9 to 12. So while you have the ability to keep them at 5th grade, keep them all together, that's why we went ahead and kept that.
Let me interrupt there. How many, I'm assuming it's not many at all, I mean, how many students would be zoned for Broussard Middle that are currently going to Ernest Galette?
On 5th grade?
Yeah, not the Youngsville Middle students.
I would have to pull up my system to parse that out because we're not making any move there. We're only, judging from the others, we're probably looking at probably, maybe about a dozen or so, if I had to guess.
Okay, so that's not even worth the conversation, but I mean, we're talking about 900, how many students?
Mr. Hefner's projected Galette for 903 this fall. Then their October 1 count back in the fall was 984.
And we made some trimming on that Galette zone from, it's not following its origins, but we did pull some off.
You think it's going to go down from 980 to 903?
Well, we're reducing the size of that zone for 2017. Yeah, so it should come down. Now, keep in mind, too, that the long-range discussion the Board's been having is putting another elementary school over in that Broussard area. That's going to help with Galette, that's going to help with GT Linden, and that's also going to help with Drexel. And so, I don't anticipate this zone staying the way it is in the long term. If you build that second elementary school there, then we're going to be coming in with a different zone plan that's going to modify that area and help relieve the overcrowding while filling a new facility.
All right, any other questions or comments from the Board?
9-4, None Against.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hefner.
Thank you.
All right, the next item pulled was 3.4 Instructional Programs During Summer of 2017. Mr. Broussard?
Yeah.
Yeah, put your microphone on, please, Mr. Broussard. Thank you.
All for approval to allow staff to provide summer program opportunity for outlining in the current pupil program, possessed program. I just had a couple of comments from it, a couple of questions for.
Second.
Can I get a second? All right. So, a second by Mr. Centany. All right, and any questions or comments from members of the public? All right, Mr. Broussard.
Thank you, staff, for putting this program together. Last year, when we had the program, when I spoke to a few parents, they were unaware of it. And I was wondering if we can do, I don't know, a better job of communicating to them. If it's possible, when we send the information home with the students, could we ask that they return it with a parent guardian's signature? Because we all know sometimes the parents don't get the paperwork for days or weeks later and it's over with. Is it possible, Mr. Craig, Ms. Samick, that when we send the flower out, that we ask that it be returned with a parent or guardian's signature?
Yes, sir, we can do that.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
9-4, None Against.
All right, the next items pulled are those we grouped together, 3.7 through 3.20 regarding bids related to Southside High School.
Madam President, I move to reject all Southside High School furniture fixture and equipment bids for Just Cause that are presented as agenda items 3.7 through 3.20 in Globbo, and authorize staff to rebid these items and present their recommendation at a Board Meeting in the future.
All right, second by Mr. Centany. Okay, any comments from members of the public? All right, members of the Board?
Madam President, I'd like to offer that the "just cause" is the failure to provide an option for electronic bids.
All right, any other Board members?
9-4, None Against.
All right, the last item pulled was 3.23 Approval to Issue a Request for Qualifications for Architectural Services to Develop Wing Addition Construction Standards. Mr. Kanesic.
Madam President, I move to approve the issue of a request for qualifications for architectural services to develop wing addition construction standards.
Second.
Okay. Second by Mr. Lachey-Lee. Any comments from members of the public? Okay, members of the Board?
Madam President, I just wanted to hear the Superintendent's plan.
Dr. Aguilor?
Yes, thank you. Members of the Board, we have been encouraged repeatedly to use the most cost-effective construction design and cost estimates when we work on discussions about improvements to our facilities. I have absolutely no objection to that at all. I mentioned earlier to you that we made a trip to Ascension Parish, and they essentially have a model, a plan, a design, a set of parameters that are used by architects regardless of the architect chosen for a construction project. There's a template that must be used, issued by the district. My intent here is to work with the chosen firm and develop the construction parameters that we want in these wings to reduce the cost so that we can maximize our monies as far as it might go. So I want to get a head start on this. We get this done, we get a favorable vote, April 29, we get the construction documents in place, we can turn these projects loose to architects much more quickly, and they'll be building wings that match our desire.
All right, any other questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Angel?
Yes, ma'am. I want to point out that my only interest, my main concern and my main interest is that we utilize architects, we spread the work over architects that live and work here in Lafayette Parish. And I understand that we all want to have an objective manner in which. And I understand that we all want to have an objective manner in which we choose these architects. But I would like to, and I don't know how much, how much we've tweaked, we've done, but I would just like to make sure that it is really objective. And I know that that's one of the, one of the parts of it that Mr. Kanesic thinks highly of, and I agree with him that it be objective. But, for instance, I don't think that we should hold a lot of, award a lot of points to an architect that has done a lot of work for the Lafayette Parish School Board. You tend to, and, Dr., y'all can jump in when you want to, but when you start using how much, how many millions of dollars an architect has done for our school system, and you award points based on those millions of dollars, you, in my opinion, you disproportionately discriminate against an architect who has not done any work for the school system. He's not any less, or she is not any less qualified. They haven't been, you know, working fewer years. They've been in Lafayette as long or longer than others. But the fact that they didn't receive any work for, let's just say, three or four or five years or whatever from the school board, I don't think that should preclude them from being considered as being an objective part of the process of selecting architects. In fact, I think that we should try our very best to spread the work around to as many architects as we can. These architects pay taxes in Lafayette Parish. They have kids and our grandkids, or, you know, if any of them is my age, they might even have great-grandkids at a town school in Lafayette Parish. And so, I just want to make sure that our quote "objective" questionnaire is just that, that it's objective, and it doesn't give undue advantage to someone who was fortunate enough to have done $5, $10, $15 million worth of work. And I'd like to see it spread around.
And Mr. Broussard?
I agree with Ms. Angel. I know each time we build, we want to make it better than the previous one, but I would, the schools that we are going to build wings on, they've been existing for 20, 30 years, and I would ask that we, we don't go out and build a Taj Mahal attached to facilities that's been in existence for 30, 40, 50 years. And I would like to see us venture more into a small business. There's a lot of small businesses in the area that's starving for work to be done with the school board, and I would like to see them get the opportunity sometimes, when the $200 million that we're going to spend the next 10 years with these wings and whatever else we're doing. If we could invite some of the small businesses in here to be a part of that, I think it would be most appreciative by the residents in Lafayette. Thank you.
All right. Any other Board members?
9-4, None Against.
All right, that was the last item on the agenda, so I will adjourn this meeting.